Good evening and welcome to the May Committee of the Whole Meeting. The Board of Trustees of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Thursday, May 11, 2017, in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, at 6:00 PM. For the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, May 15, 2017, school board agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve any concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV Online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that your cell phones are turned off or in the silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I don't see any members of the Community Leadership Committee. Have I skipped anyone? If you'll stand. No, I think I was right. And I didn't see any Boy Scouts tonight.
They're busy in Austin.
Yeah, that's true. They are probably in Austin. We have two reports tonight. We're going to start with the reports. A, the administration will present an oral report on the preliminary budget for the 2017-2018 school year. And Mr. Snow, I think you're going to get us started.
2017-2018 operating budget preparation process. And to do so, I will turn the presentation over to Karen Smith, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Dr. Henry and the board, I'm here to present to you the preliminary budget for the 2017-18 school year. And the factors that are influencing this year's budget is a modest economic recovery of oil and gas prices, a decline in the student enrollment growth rate, as well as the opening of new facilities. The facilities that we will be opening this year is Bridgeland High School, the New Madski, Wells &amp; Hoover Elementary, as well as the Naderatorium. Also, we will, we are predicting a slight decline in the property value growth, as well as, as you well know about the current school finance law, that influences our budget. Our goals for the budget process this year were to preserve the quality of instruction and services and to have a compensation plan that is competitive with other districts to retain and recruit quality staff, as well as a higher priority on student and staff safety and also protect the district's operational infrastructure, which is the aging FFNE equipment that need replacing. You will see here, as I indicated, over the last five years, the decline in the property value growth. Over the past five years, like in 1314 to 1415, there was an increase in the property value growth. But as you will see, the last three years, including the year where the budget year, is that we've had a decline in that increase. And so it's gone from in 2014-15 of about a 16% increase in property values to what we're projecting in our preliminary budget of about 6% increase in property values. Then on the student enrollment growth, we're also, you can see here what I mentioned, that we have had a decline in that student enrollment growth. Over the same five-year period, you will see the budgeted ADA as well as the actual ADA or the average daily attendance listed here. And you can see in both situations, there's been a gradual decline in the district's enrollment growth. And we have built our budget on about a little under a percent, about a half a percent to a little under a percent budget, percent increase in enrollment. Then another area that you've probably heard about is you've heard that the legislature has, in the current legislative session, they have been, you know, banking on the decline or the increase in property values. And that's what they're balancing their budget with, is the increase in property values. And this is reflected, will be reflected in the next couple of slides that I show you. But what you will also see here is the tax revenues here have increased at what we're bringing in as a district because of the increase in property values. They have gone over the last five-year period from $372 million in 2013-14 to $522 million in 2017-18. That's the projection. And then the state revenue has done the opposite, and it has declined. You will see from 2013-14 to 2017-18 that there has been a decline in the state share of our revenue. In fact, over the five-year period, it's about $52 million decline in state revenue that we have received. This graph depicts that picture even better. You will see in like 2012-2013 school year to the 2000, in the 2013-14 school year, it's been fairly even. It was about a 50-50% share. And you will see the difference in that increase in the district's share from 2014-15 to 2017-18, that the district's share has been growing compared to the state's share towards our One of the things we mentioned in our budget goals is having competitive teacher salaries. This is the 2016-17 teacher salaries for the districts, neighboring districts in our area. And what we usually look at is the zero year or the starting teacher salary, the five year, the 10 year, the 15, the 20, and then the maximum on the salary schedule. And you will see here that Cypress Fairbanks has been very competitive. And in 2016-17, we were first in our comparable, our area districts for the zero year, the five year, and then the 15 year. And then in the 10 year salary, we, in the 20 year, and then the maximum, we were second compared to the other districts in the area. And the starting salary, if you'll recall, last year for starting teachers was $52,025. The plan for the 2017 school year and how the budget was built is to provide a competitive starting teacher salary. And because of the legislative session, as well as just having preliminary property values, right now, we're looking at a range of a salary increase. We're hoping to provide a salary increase from 1% to 3% for all classroom teachers, and then a salary increase of 1% to 3% for all other employees in the district. We also have to provide funding for the opening of the new campuses that I mentioned before, as well as funding for the replacement of our FFNE, and then our software licenses and maintenance agreements that all tied in with our new, with our bond initiative for technology, as well as an increase in property value, you know, property insurance that we're anticipating. So what this means in cost to the district is the cost of teacher salary increase at a 1% salary increase for teachers would be about $5.7 million. A 3% salary increase would be $17 million for teachers. And then the cost of the salary increase for all other employees at 1% would be $2.5 million, and a 3% salary increase would be $6.9 million. Also included is $7.4 million for the opening of the new campuses, and this is the operating cost associated with opening campuses. As you're aware, we build the campuses out of bond funds, but we have to operate and man the campuses with the district's general operating budget. And then $2.2 million is the cost of the other miscellaneous increases that I mentioned, which is the FFNE, the software, and the district's property insurance. What this reflects here on the preliminary budget is the maximum salary increase of 3%. So if we gave a 3% salary increase, we are showing the local revenues that we had already showed you before with the property value increase of about 6% at 500, almost $538 million, state revenue at about $357 million, and then the federal revenue at $7 million, for a total revenues of almost $902 million. Then the expenditures with a 3% salary increase would be $928 million, which would possibly create a deficit budget of $26 million. Now, we are hoping that with, if property values are better than we anticipate, if enrollment's better than we had projected, as well as if the school finance law is changed in some manner, would benefit this. And also, we are very cautious as we spend. So we believe with current conservative spending, that hopefully, we will still be able to balance the budget. But we're just showing you the possibility of what could happen if some of these contingencies that we budget for, if everything happens, then this is what could possibly occur. We also budget, we also usually have budgeted but unfilled positions. And so if all of those things go in our favor, then we're hoping to have a balanced budget that we can propose to you with a 3% salary increase. But at this point in time, this is what we're looking at in the preliminary budget. Now I'm open to any questions that you might have.
All right, let's start her on this side. Ms. Blackshear.
How would, you know, there's a lot of building in new homes in our area. How would that impact our numbers?
Well, if we have an increase in, if that affects our property values, if we have an increase in property values, that would benefit our numbers.
Right, right. Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Karen, just, just for people that are listening in, and a simple explanation on looking at the graph and what the state contributes and what we do locally, why has there been such a decrease in what the state is contributing?
The decrease, well, the decrease in what the state has contributed, basically, the way it works is what the current state funding formula is, is if you have an increase in property values, as they go up, and your local share or your property taxes go up, then the state kicks in less. They're always trying to balance out the amount. We don't really get any more money unless we have an increase in student enrollment. That's the way we get more money through the state aid formula. So the reason why is because as the property values, you know, go up, which I mentioned that they're riding on the property value increases that have been happening, then the state kicks in less money.
The legislature relies heavily on increases in property values throughout the state. And so as they budget, as the legislature budgets and as those increases in property values occur during the course of the biennium, that amount of money that they don't have to spend is used to fund all other parts of the state's budget, not just school finance.
One final question, and that's on the student enrollment growth. And like it shows in 2016-17, our ADA is 108,000, and yet we say we're at 115,000 students. So what's the difference there?
Oh, that's an excellent question. The difference is you're, the 115,000 is true enrollment at any point in time, the enrollment that we have to build for, that we have to man the schools for, because if that enrollment shows up. But what we're showing here is average daily attendance that takes into account absences. And so that's what that is reflecting. And I believe we budget about at 95% on that number.
Our average, our average daily membership is 115,000, but that's on average how many kids show up.
Not all, not all the students show up.
Every day.
Every day.
I just wanted to clarify, because last year when we were talking about the budget, and I got a couple of emails going, wait a minute, we've got 100,000 students, why are we not showing them as the ADA? So thank you for explaining that.
We're funded, we're funded by the state based on ADA. But we have to develop a budget and hire teachers based on our enrollment. And so we're actually being funded at the state level through state revenue at a lesser amount than what we really have to plan on in terms of the number of teachers that we have to be able to provide for the students that are enrolled.
Appreciate it.
And I would also say, we have a very high attendance rate. I mean, it may not look that way, but compared to other school districts, especially large districts, yeah, but we have an extremely high.
Our attendance rate runs between 96 and 97%.
Thank you.
Very good. Dr. Oakletree?
Yes. What is the status of the property tax bill that was before the legislature? I think Senator Ben Court authored that bill. And how would that, how will that bill affect us if it is going to be passed?
The bill was actually directed more toward municipalities and counties and not toward school districts as such, trying to limit the availability of revenue that those municipalities are able to use for services. There is a component of a rollback rate that is being discussed and throughout, through the conference committee. But I don't see that bill having a significant negative effect on the school.
Good, good. Also, do we, I know we look at the housing, the subdivisions, new subdivisions, and to factor future enrollment, but do we also consider apartments? Because we have apartment growth in our district.
Yes, we consider all of that.
And Dr. Oakletree, just for those watching at home, we're going to have a great presentation on that here next, that will talk about the number of students on average we receive from apartments versus single-family residences.
And one of the things, Dr. Oakletree, I may have neglected to say is, is that this budget was built on current law, you know, not what might happen with HB 21, so.
Are you done, Dr. Oakletree? All right. Mr. Jackson?
A couple of things. One, if you would, explain to the viewing audience, since it's been in the press so much, are we a 41 or a 42? Are we a contributory or a recipient district?
We are a Chapter 41 district, and right now, we're in the gap where we're not having to pay anything back to the state, but we are a Chapter 41 district.
And would you explain what the difference between a 41 and a 42 is?
Sure, yes. A Chapter 41 district is a district that's considered property-rich and has, and if you have over a certain value, then you have to give money back to help the other poorer districts. If you're a Chapter 42 district, then you're one of the poorer districts that receives that benefit.
And just in terms of rough approximations, property wealth on a per-student basis for us to, the threshold for us to cross to become a contributory district versus where we are approximately right now?
I believe, Stuart, I think, I think you have that.
Our property value per student, under law, the property value per student has to be equal to or greater than $514,000. We are projected for 2017-18 to be about $362,000. And so as we project out property value growth, student enrollment growth, and ADA, it appears that we would not be a contributor to the state or a district that is subject to recapture until the year 2020, 2020, 2021.
One of the reasons why I asked the question is, on my third trip to Austin, none of the staff members that I spoke with knew whether we were a 41 or a 42. And those who thought we were a 41 thought we were a contributory 41, and that the commissioner's ruling of involving the definition of contributory 41 benefited us. And I presume it does not, since we're not a contributor.
That's correct. In fact, there was an article in the Houston Chronicle this last, this last week. The article was addressing the Houston ISD election regarding recapture. And the Houston Chronicle report reported that CyFair ISD, as well as KDISD and some others, were recaptured, subject to recapture. And we had contacted the Chronicle and corrected that information because that was incorrect information.
Thank you. You mentioned that the funding is based on current law, and obviously, House Bill 21 would provide approximately, how many more million if it happens to get passed?
About 12 and a half million.
However, if the Senate version gets passed, would that involve a reduction in funding?
The conference, are you talking about the conference committee amendment that, on 21, or 2145 that was filed by Larry Taylor?
You know, actually, both, first 2145 that Senator Taylor filed, but more specifically, since we're now in conference. So first, if you happen to have the numbers, and you may not, because I don't know that the runs were actually made by Austin on 2145, or identify what salient differences are as it could impact us on the conference bill discussions.
Well, the conference committee substitute for House Bill 21 just came out today, and we haven't had an opportunity yet to analyze that. So to answer your question, we really don't have the numbers on that yet.
But perhaps you might be able to talk about that on Monday?
We can.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, just to add to that, we were, we were all on board with 21 until they added a voucher provision, and then we rescinded our support of that bill. So, and that's the way I understand it. And Tracy, you may have more details. That's the way it stands right now in conference?
Yes, it was left in the Senate Ed Committee, and we changed our position on it, as did many districts across the state today, once they added that amendment to the bill.
And I understand that Senator Taylor's Bill 2145, we, we understand that that bill is dead at this point in time, but.
You know, one of your key assumptions has to do with the seat time projections. And two years ago, we had a robust discussion on seat time projections and adjustments that we needed to make to the budget. When I take a look at your seat time projections here, they continue to run historically in excess of actual. Is there a reason why for 17-18 that we don't try and be a little closer to, to actual?
Well, as you will see here, that's what we tried to do, but a lot of the, it's, everything is dependent on other scenarios. So we have tried to be, show a very conservative number here in this projection. I think because the enrollment just started kind of gradually changing, that's, that's the reason why the little bit differences. But we always budget a contingency for that, making sure in case it doesn't turn out exactly where we think it will be, that we've budgeted that contingency.
Then you also identified that with the current assumptions that we have, we currently have a projected deficit.
With a 3% salary increase, that would be.
With the assumptions that you identified, we, we currently have a projected deficit. The, the question is, what is the magnitude of our cash reserves? Are those sufficient to satisfy the deficit? And if we satisfy the deficit, once again, under your assumptions, will that leave the remaining cash reserves to be adequate on a going forth basis?
Mr. Jackson, you referring to fund balance? Is that what you're referring to with cash reserves? Yes, sir. We have almost, just close to six months in fund balance currently. And so we would, our monthly expenditures run about $72 million a month. And so we feel very comfortable that we would still have a good fund balance at five and a half months, you know, even with this particular scenario that we showed you, of the 26 million to fund balance.
So the worst case is we are eroding no more than two weeks of our fund balance?
Correct, and, yes, that's correct, and actually, a little less than two weeks.
One of the challenges that we have been experiencing, not only in the budget process for 2018, or 2017, 2018, but the prior several years, is the, and Karen referred to that and has a slide on that, the decline in the amount of state revenue that we receive. It's placing a greater burden. I would say that it would be placing a greater burden on the taxpayers, however, it's not because we're not able to raise our tax rate without a voter, without voter approval. But, but the decline in state revenue, and I want to get back to this because I think it's significant, the decline in, in state revenue over the last several years is very, very significant. In 2012, fiscal 2012, the state share of our operating revenue was about 46%. In the current year, fiscal year 2015-16, I'm sorry, 16-17, that state share has dropped to 41%. And it's projected that by the end of this biennium in fiscal 2019, that the state will only be funding 37% of our operating revenues. So it causes us, as a school district, wanting to be very creative, but to, it places a greater challenge and greater burden on our budgeting process, especially as our neighboring school districts are increasing salaries and we're vying for the, the best teachers that are available. And the opening of new campuses, as well as our enrollment continues to grow.
That disparity and change is certainly something that the voters in our district need to be aware of because it, it has a significant impact. I have an unfair question for y'all, but, but I do that to everybody, so you have to be accustomed to it. Under House Bill 21, is the, what I refer to as the funding gap between us and other districts on a water basis, is that widening or is it being reduced under the proposed legislation?
As, well, as House Bill 21 was written prior to the conference committee, the Senate substitute, the gap between the state funding compared to our neighboring districts and districts in Harris County has actually widened somewhat slightly.
Well, that's unfortunate. You worked very hard for a number of years to try and. You worked very hard for a number of years to try and reduce that gap and to try and reduce, uh, the financial penalty that, uh, has been assessed against our district. So it's unfortunate that's continuing. Uh, that concludes my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Ryan?
Well, obviously, this is all conjecture at, at this point. I mean, there's some, you have some idea of what could happen. On a timeframe basis, from when we, when we start staffing, hiring for the next school year and when we have adequate numbers, how's that going to play out? That makes sense, my question makes sense?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand. I'm sorry, Mr. Ryan.
No, I'll just check with you. Time-wise, because here, I mean, these are all what-ifs. If this happens, this could happen. If this does, when do we have, uh, more of a concrete answer to where we can look at it and so we go out to, let's say, a Sam Houston to recruit new teachers, where we're going to say, hey, Tomball's starting here, but we're starting here?
Well, let me just say that, um, every year, the budget process is a what-if process. I mean, uh, everything that we have in the budget process is pretty much of a, a, a projection. We're projecting student enrollment, we're projecting student attendance rates, we're projecting, uh, property values.
I got that.
We, you know...
Looking for, like, a time-wise, is our hiring department going to be in a crunch, because of where we're going to be here or not?
I, I, I would answer that by saying that, no, we won't be because our salaries are already, uh, as high or higher than those that we're competing with around us. And, and a lot of times when we recruit, we will say our starting teacher pay is fifty-two oh-two-five with a proposed three percent pay raise.
Okay.
So it's not a promise, but it's what's been proposed.
So we'll, we'll be coming back to you, uh, at the June meeting for adoption of a budget that'd be concrete. Now, uh, I mean, obviously, uh, some of those assumptions within the projections and then within the budget process, uh, will not be definitive, but that's what the budget will be. And we'll have a salary schedule at that point in time and a starting teacher salary that will be definite, definite.
And I appreciate what y'all are doing. I just remember the, what I call the dark years of when, uh, we had, uh, board members that didn't care about sticking it to the employees. And those times are long gone, and I'm grateful for that, but I just want to make sure that, hopefully, we're able to do something in that, in that range. So I appreciate what y'all have done.
That's, that's actually, Don, one of the mottos we use is we don't stick it to the employees when we recruit.
Hey, you know what? If it works, go with it.
That's disintegrating a little bit. Ms. Hartley, you have a question?
I just did want to echo what Don's saying about how important it is when we are recruiting people and talking to people. And I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Jackson for kind of, uh, asking about the general fund balance and that that deficit is, is small. I would, uh, compared to other things, and, you know, I would like to see the teachers get the, get everybody get the three percent raise if at all possible. So I just wanted to be on record with that.
Thank you, Ms. Hartley. Are there any further questions? And we will be looking at a, um, a more, uh, a more finalized budget in June for a vote, is that correct?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Mr. Snell, we appreciate it.
Could I add one thing?
Absolutely.
Just, again, I know the board knows it, but just for everyone else, we're actually on a July first budget year, so the board will actually be approving the budget at the end of June. So we don't have to wait till August, so just as a reminder.
Great. All right, we have a second report. B, the administration will provide a report on the Cypress Fairbanks ISD demographic update, completed by population and survey analyst, PASA. And I believe Ms. Hall is going to start this discussion.
Yes, as, uh, PASA's getting set, set up, if you want to go ahead and come on up, just quickly want to, uh, share that they're going to be providing you with our yearly demographic update. I know each of you have received a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that they will be sharing tonight. In addition, each one of you received the large binder that clearly will provide you with much more detailed information about the district and all of the information that they're going to be highlighting in this presentation. For our viewing audience, once, uh, we have this presentation this evening, we will be posting a link, uh, to this demographic update on the district website so that those folks may, um, have access to this information as well. And I think it's also been the practice for PASA to post a link, uh, to our study on their, uh, district, on their, uh, company website. So there's lots of opportunities for folks to have this information. But in the, uh, presentation that they're going to be sharing with you this evening, you're going to see, uh, some updated information on the economic and demographic trends in the district, along with the new housing projections that they are seeing, and some relocation of, uh, areas or student population relocation. So this, uh, is a very informative report, and we'll be, uh, happy to take any questions after the report.
We do appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, and I wanted to tell you that some of the slides may look a bit complex, uh, and I hope that you would just study maybe, uh, the underlined, uh, phrases, uh, as, uh, key points for us. And if you have questions along the way, please feel free to interject your comments and thoughts, uh, as well as questions. We did want to emphasize the growth this year, uh, of course. Katy is growing faster than Cy Fair, simply not due to new housing, uh, being a, uh, primary factor, but a greater number of students per house in Katy. This district is ahead in terms of new housing closings and housing starts. And then Conroe has, uh, also grown quite a bit, you know, growing both north, southeast, and west in that large district. Now, here for the, the, uh, five-year growth, again, you see Katy and Houston. Of course, North Forest ISD was added, uh, to HISD. And if we look at the growth rates for this district, we do see, as has been noted by, uh, Stewart and others, the, uh, lowered growth each year, uh, in this district, and that's been important. But maybe more important is to understand the locational configuration of growth and decline. Which subdivisions are increasing with students, which ones are not, uh, among the older subdivisions in particular. Now, we have worked diligently this year to try to look at places of residence of birth mothers, and we do see that there is less net in-migration of kindergarteners. So in other words, people are moving in with young children less. A part of it has to do with the, uh, price points of homes and, uh, simply that younger families find it difficult to get mortgages and are moving, in a lot of cases, uh, to areas heavily oriented to apartments. So you can see now that we expect, uh, births aged five years forward will track pretty carefully as a predictor of kindergarten. And this year, there was a four percent drop in kindergarten. So what happens in kindergarten tells us a lot about the next twelve years. Uh, we, you know, don't try to be melodramatic, but it's very important. Now, uh, we have much longer tables that deal with charter schools, and we've contacted every private school in and near the district. There are thirty-seven private schools that have a key impact in terms of students from within the boundaries of CFI SD attending those private schools, and forty-two charter schools. But I was surprised at what a low percent there are in charter schools and, uh, as well, uh, in the private schools. I had thought that charter schools would be, perhaps be growing at three thousand a year, uh, in this district. And you can see you have only three thousand total, uh, in charter schools. And the one thing that looks different about this table is that we are, uh, depending on, uh, the American Community Survey and some other data. That is a small sample that is for just this school district, uh, undertaken by the Census Bureau. So we can see here, we don't know how many are homeschooled and how many are simply not in school, but there's a rough, rough estimate of four percent. And so normally, we wouldn't be showing that, but then that makes the tally higher of K through twelve aged residents that are in the Cy Fair school district. Now, employment trends are important because one of the chief factors of folks feeling they can relocate into Cy Fair is job stability. And if there is any increase in unemployment, then individuals feel less secure about purchasing a new home and less secure about relocating. So you can see that the unemployment rate in blue has remained stable, uh, for the last six months, and that's a, that's a good thing. But it has been lower, and it will continue to, um, lessen as the oil price, uh, creeps up a bit and there's a bit more of a recovery. Now, this district has always fascinated me because of the, uh, big proportion that are in the service sectors of education and medical services, and then managerial and administrative services. And then the third ranked is, uh, the twelve percent that are in manufacturing, but there is an indirect tie to manufacturing with distribution facilities and other services. So actually, this district is really unique in terms of having a manufacturing focus. It and Waller as well have always evidenced that focus. And that continues to, uh, in different ways, uh, be affected by, of course, the port of Houston and its growth, uh, and, um, in, uh, hopefully, uh, with, uh, the port of Freeport at some point in the near term, and the fact that the state Highway Thirty-Six, uh, will continue from Freeport up through Waller, very near the western border of the district. And that's going to help commercial traffic and, uh, uh, personal traffic as, as well. So, uh, the, we talked about the leading, um, economic sector being health and, and education, but, uh, some pundits are suggesting that this sector is slowing in Houston and may have been a bit overbuilt and overstaffed. But of course, there's so many unknowns in terms of the provision of healthcare. However, it's useful to think about the fact that that may not be the high-growth sector in twenty seventeen that we saw in twenty fifteen and sixteen. And then, uh, Dyken, of course, is adding employees. Most, um, data suggests four thousand, but they've explained to Waller ISD it will be five thousand, uh, when they get fully, uh, staffed. And, uh, now then we're seeing other manufacturing and distribution centers that are catering to Dyken are also being constructed. So, uh, what we hear, even from the Waller superintendent, is that these individuals are going to be interested in residents in Cy Fair ISD. So it's going to be interesting to see what a nice addition of, of, of residents that may encourage. Now, uh, one thing to keep in mind is that there's several different, uh, prognostications about the twenty seventeen job growth for Houston and Harris County, but, uh, it would be a mere thirty thousand probably that has to be distributed among sixty-one school districts. Uh, so, uh, we're not going to see a big job increase. And, uh, yet, at the same time, while we know that, uh, Houston in general is very dependent on the oil sector, uh, we do see that there is, um, a, a good, uh, recovery that's occurring in this district. And one real-time way to do this and see that this is happening is looking at housing starts, because that we can measure every month and see that that is certainly picking up and tie that to the, the positive thoughts of job stability and job growth in this district. And also, I'm sure that you are very well aware of this, but one thing that has been different about the oil price, uh, plummeting so greatly at this last two-and-a-half-year period relative to other time periods is that districts were not heavily affected ever in other times of downturn, because the coveted districts that were highly regarded continued to grow. And yet, this district, uh, as well as Katy, Fort Bend, and virtually all others, but especially those three, saw a huge plummeting of housing starts. And so while you saw a twelve percent decline for the Houston area as a whole for the year twenty fifteen, for example, this district was having the greatest increase in housing starts for some quarters. So which district was, be the most affected? This district. And when there was a need for, um, uh, holding back on, on builders buying lots and so forth, where was the biggest impact? This district, of course, and Katy as well, and Fort Bend. So, uh, that's what made this downturn different. The past downturns had allowed consolidations to increase jobs in Houston because folks from other states and countries were consolidating, uh, their positions by moving here, as well as, uh, folks taking, uh, some three-month time periods off, et cetera, from their jobs. But this is, this has been a different situation. So housing projections, first and foremost, we have to look at the purple because that is the area that's basically built out. That is really, uh, very critical. And if I might just hold up this map one time and urge you all to take home any maps you might want, uh, that if you look here, you will see the blue areas, and those blue areas mean the built-out subdivisions. So the built-out subdivisions are important to think about. That's what you're seeing up there in purple, and they are the sleeping giant of the district because we know that the number of children in those subdivisions will not remain the same. Some are declining and some are regenerating and adding students. But right now, they're in the tan and, uh, gold areas, uh, as you see on the west, there are only seventeen percent, uh, of the acreage, uh, that we see is left to develop, basically. So that's a fairly built-out district. That's also, it's surprising, but that's also very similar to Katy, because Katy has those huge reservoirs. We think it's not built out, but it's got about the same percent remaining. And then the most built-out district in the Houston area that we work with is, 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 uh, Klein, and there are others like, uh, Spring already built out. So, and Aleaf. And speaking of Aleaf, it's one of the top three most dense districts in the state. It has about fifty-two percent of the students there in, uh, multifamily units. And the other two are Highland Park and Laredo, the most dense in Texas out of about a thousand and twenty-five districts. Highland Park has no commercial, just children everywhere. So here, uh, now, I have to apologize for our GIS coordinator saying that two ninety was recently completed. We all know that that's not true, uh, but I wanted you to look at, uh, the green, uh, east-west corridors and, uh, keep in mind that those little green wiggles there indicate, what will allow these parcels to be developed because these are all going to be major improvements. Uh, now, others that are in the, the yellow to the north, like Mason Road, they're, they're not finally planned and they're not formally funded and will be developer-funded. Uh, so that, uh, is a different consideration. And here, uh, also, let's see. Oh, there we go. I did want to tell you that as of December, I'm sure some of you are familiar with this US two ninety thoroughfare study, and it was the definitive study, basically, to indicate what will happen to different arterials, uh, that are still on the frontier, that, uh, where there has, uh, been no specific guidelines. And this was approved by the Harris County Commissioners in December of twenty sixteen, so it's helpful, uh, to have that data. And really, uh, maybe one thing to think about is the fact that, of course, with two ninety to the west of the Grand Parkway being completed... to the west of the Grand Parkway being completed, that has reduced travel times and will on two ninety to the extent that some of the commercial entities that have struggled to stay afloat while two ninety's been under construction are eyeing a little further out because it would be the same travel time. So we're going to see a lot of commercial development in Waller ISD. But the travel time definitely has been lessened and will be when the, the two ninety improvements are complete. Also, because there are no feeder roads to speak of on the two nine, on the Grand Parkway portion in this district, then that has a huge impact from a demographic perspective because the landowners can definitely aspire to all commercial land use, but there won't be a way to get to the commercial land use that could evolve except for interior commercial roads. So just keep that in mind because that's going to spawn residential development in areas where the landowner is saying, "I will never sell unless it's a hundred percent commercial." Then, you know, sooner or later, the, the time will arise when they will sell. Now, muds, just briefly, we don't work with any other school district in the state that rivals this district in number of muds, three hundred and nine. And at the same time, the surface water concerns are, are being met. A thirty-nine-mile pipeline from northeast to northwest is going to help provide water a bit, surface water from the Trinity River, but on the whole, this district's going to be dependent on muds. And here, I wanted you to see the channel that is so impacting future development. So there's, there's one other, there's one other tiny map that we have, and hopefully you might want a copy of this. This is if you wanted a crib sheet just for the west side and just for some portions of the west side. But here, where you see the green, that area right now is basically not a creek. It is just very flat. And yet, those developers are now being required in what is called a frontier project or plan to work together to find ways of channelizing drainage so that that area can be developed. Now, the, the individuals involved are, as you might guess, the south part of Bridgeland. They'll continue to develop to the north and postpone this big cost as long as they can. And then Silvestri, the investor south of Bridgeland. And also adjacent to Bridgeland is Fry Venture, another big developer. But they have to work together now to create this channel before development can occur. And what does that mean for the district? It means that development that's residential, which would have been in all of those locations, will be postponed for probably three years in those locations. And then those, because those are the big developers, then it, the smaller developers needed this to be accomplished so that they could proceed. So this is going to have a big impact on the district. However, we had last year been considering this, and so it's been taken into account, and the data does not differ greatly from last year. We, um...
Can you go back just once?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm, I'm blind, I'm having trouble seeing this. Can you give me kind of a proximity of where that channel is going to be?
Okay. Could I, could I just tell you who the big developers are? Or, so it is, you know where the FedEx Distribution Center there, that's white. And so if you go east of there, then you've got Silvestri, and he is an investor who puts in residential but hopes for commercial too, and or sells for both of those purposes. And then just to the northeast of, of his is Fry Road Venture, and that's another big developer, Ali Abrahimi. And he, these will ultimately have a lot of residential, but they'll have some commercial too. And then north of that, the, where you see the strange little curves in green, then that's the south part of Bridgeland. And so they have to work together. Now, typically, big developments like Bridgeland and Ellison don't work with one another. They plan their detention, they plan their drainage. And so this so far is not succeeding well. I mean, they're, they haven't happily met and worked out a plan. So this is holding up the development, and, and in a way, it's going to cause even the Langham Creek and Cypress Creek plans, I think, to maybe be abated a bit. But they, those plans are, I think, very well-developed and hopefully they'll, they'll move along as planned.
Our Bridgeland High School in Wells is north of that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So you've been patient to, to listen to this. We did want to emphasize that there were a lot of parcels that were sold that would be targeted for residential development in this past year, probably because of concerns of continuing stagnation of oil prices. And yet, there's still a hundred and twenty parcels for sale as of December. And we know that there is going to be continued multifamily development in these smaller five-plus-acre parcels, and we are contacting those owners to try to have a good understanding of that development. Speaking of multifamily, you can see how multifamily throughout Houston has declined. But at the same time, in this district, we carefully follow every planned multifamily development and try to time when it will be open. These are the apartments that are currently either about to open or already being occupied. And so by October twenty seventeen, we expect another six hundred and fifty-five students, for example, in those units. And at the same time, it's so fascinating to know that those reserves in the big master-planned communities have been set aside for large developments that are multifamily, tremendously impactful to the district, although they may have very low ratios of students and be, for the millennials and younger. But you can see that that's going to impact the district by about fifty-six hundred units. And Town Lake is now, as of about a week ago, we think going to have about five hundred less there. So we'll have to alter that, but you know, the district is changing daily. Now, here, we're looking instead of at multifamily, at single-family. And look at the last two quarters, you can see growth moving upward. And of course, that means recovery, and that's, that's good. So we know that Cy Fair ranks second in terms of starts for the first quarter of twenty seventeen behind Fort Bend. And it, again, has been a leader at, in different quarters for the sixty-one school districts. Now, one other thing of, of importance for single-family housing that's projected, about twenty-three thousand housing units in all are, are projected for the ten years and to be, to be single-family. And at the same time, about of that thirty-eight thousand total projected housing units, about thirteen thousand eight hundred or so will be multifamily, about a third. So here, you see that data, but know that, again, right now, we have fifteen percent of the students living in multifamily units. But in terms of new units, we expect about a third of the units to be multifamily. And that's because as the district builds out but is still highly regarded, parents will continue to move in, but the places they'll move to will be apartments because that will be what's left and available. So there will be a change and a greater focus on multifamily. And here, then are the projections. The red is the, basically, the Town Lake area, Bridgeland, and then the goal that you see is the Dunham Point and another parcel that's called Rich, Richfield. So you see basically the same thing here, looking out five years further, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six, a lot of development. And this will be post some of the problems in dealing with drainage. So a lot of new homes in that last five years. Here is the ten years overall. You again see the west is receiving all, almost all the growth. And then after twenty twenty-six, basically Richfield and a, in red in the south is a, a big parcel that has yet to develop. The acronym for it is T R A A C, that parcel. So right now, a single-family homes for the average home is point six four students per house. So the state is about point six three statewide. And Katy is a point seven two. So that's why, you know, just that ten percent higher makes a big difference. Multifamily, point three eight, again, very popular place to live and therefore the ratio is high, students per unit. So for the master-planned communities, all single-family homes, it's interesting, too, to see that those ratios of students per house have crept up or remain steady in all the big master-planned communities but Fairfield. But it's aging a bit. Now Copperfield has remained exactly the same, and we, and it in the past has declined, but this year it stayed the same. So projected student enrollment, and we had to brag that we've been fairly accurate here in this big district over the last few years, but this year, we use the high-growth. We'd been so concerned about the oil price situation, we were too conservative, so we have actually been making long-range plans via the, the high-growth projection. And I wanted you to see that we are expecting about a hundred and twenty-six thousand students under a high-growth scenario and a low-growth scenario, very little growth with a hundred and nineteen thousand plus, basically only a hundred and twenty thousand under the low-growth scenario. And what that means basically is that under the low-growth scenario, the blue subdivisions would continue to lose students in the net rather than start gaining and new families moving in as folks age. Because normally, that happens after a subdivision, any time after it's about thirty-four years old, but it may not happen at all. It sometimes does not. So we have to look at every single subdivision and track it through time. And that's a major focus, very critical, so that we will not make a mistake and either over or underestimate based on these water, sleep, what we call the sleeping giants in this district. So here, then this is a slide that shows this again, and again, shows the low percent growth for the low scenario of growth. So very low, under one percent a year, and, and even the high scenario growth has just a few years with over one percent. And that's because the district is both losing about a thousand students a year in the blue subdivisions right now, while gaining in the active subdivisions about two thousand. So the net is about a thousand gained. And I appreciate your patience, and Stacy's going to discuss basically what the projections mean in terms of attendance zones.
Thank you. So district-wide, you see this growth projected, but in order to use it practically, you need to know where that growth is projected to happen. So what you see here are the red and orange are the hotspots of growth, and this doesn't, these don't have any numbers or, or words on them because these are rescodes. And I just want you to focus on the red and the orange areas. Those are, the rescodes projected to gain the most students in the next ten years. And that corresponds with what you saw earlier with the gain in new housing. Those red spots reflect Town Lake, Bridgeland, and the future Dunham Point up in the north, just south of two ninety. So the next step in understanding this growth by rescode is to aggregate this into elementary attendance zones and to understand where, which elementary zones are projected to gain the most students. Not surprisingly, Wells, which is in Bridgeland, and Alt, which contains the future Dunham Point, are the two red areas you see. Those are projected to gain the most students. At the end of this projection period, Alt could have about seventeen hundred students, while Wells could have almost two thousand students. And those are followed by the orange areas. Renell, which contains Town Lake, could be about twelve hundred students, and Hemmanway, about fourteen hundred students. Those are the orange areas you see. So this, these colors show you where the growth is projected to happen, but how does that relate to the capacity in the schools that are there right now? This map compares the resident students to permanent capacity of the schools. Now, keep in mind that resident students are not necessarily exactly the same as enrollment because there are transfers within the district. But, but it's important to notice that on the west side where we saw the red growth, that's where we have the capacity space because you've been opening new schools, of course, you've been planning for it. And so for short-term planning, it's more important for you to consider the enrollment versus capacity, which is on the next slide, because that does take into account transfers. So this is the students projected for next year, next fall, compared to the capacity of those schools. And so as you can see, there are no schools projected to be operating at over a hundred and twenty percent capacity because of those balancing of, of enrollment through transfers and special programs, et cetera. However, after ten years of projected growth, if you were not to build any new elementary schools, the pick, the map looks very different. So seven of these elementary schools are projected to exceed a hundred and twenty percent capacity in ten years. Overall, the district is projected, projected to gain almost three thousand elementary students, and most of those, of course, are located on the west side. Now, as a ballpark estimate, three thousand new elementary students translates into about three new elementary schools in the next decade. Okay? Likewise, at the middle school level, let's look at the, that growth project aggregated into a middle school attendance zones. About eighteen hundred and fifty students projected to live in the Anthony Attendance Zone in ten years, and two thousand students each in Smith and Thornton. So those are the red and orange areas, the areas of highest growth projected. Again, how does this relate to the available capacity? Ten years out, if no middle schools were built, Anthony could be at about a hundred and eighteen percent utilization, Thornton at about a hundred and thirty percent, and Smith at about a hundred and thirty-two percent. Overall, district-wide, about nineteen hundred new middle school students projected over ten years, ballpark, that translates into about two new middle schools over the next ten years. And finally, at the high school level, again, this is not a surprise. The growth on the west side is accommodated or concentrated in the attendance zones for Cy Park and Bridgeland. So at the end of this ten-year projection period, Cy Park is expected to have three thousand one hundred resident students, high school students, and Bridgeland could have over four thousand resident students. I know it's not open yet, but they're coming. So again, based on the opening of the two high schools on the west side, the recent and upcoming opening, most of that projected growth will be accommodated with the schools on the ground now, most. So first of all, I'd like to say that the, the schools in the attendance zones that were impacted by this recent zoning are projected to be able to accommodate, nicely accommodate their resident student population for ten years. And that includes Cy Park filling up to ninety-four percent utilization, Cy Lakes at ninety-eight percent, and Cy Ranch at ninety-seven percent. Those are pretty ideal utilization numbers. Bridgeland, of course, is the site of the most intense growth. Bridgeland High School Attendance Zone is the site of the most intense growth because it contains Bridgeland Master Plan Community as well as the Dunham Point Future Master Plan Community. And so under this year's projections, we estimate that Bridgeland High School will reach its threshold of about a hundred and twenty percent, which is our internal working threshold for when a new school might be necessary, that Bridgeland High School might reach that threshold by about twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, at the end, very end of our projection period. So with that, I can take any questions. So, with that, I can take any questions. Good timing.
Thank you for a very comprehensive report, both of you ladies.
Do we have any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Covey?
I've been hearing a lot about the Ellison, which I see they're already building and that's all going to Katy at this point in time, right? But it looks like in looking at this, some of this, because, so some of this is, what you're showing is on the opposite side of 99 and that's what is Ellison, isn't that correct?
So, here, for example, again, I don't know if you can see this very easily, but there are two big parcels here that are Ellison. And they aspire for those to be commercial ideally in corporate campuses. So, right now, the majority, they want to be commercial and of course, that's because of the proximity to 99, to the Grand Parkway. But on the other hand, I've talked with the construction manager and the, the local division president here and they have outlined the number of apartments and single-family, but it's a fairly small number in both cases. So, it was going to be having a massive impact just two years ago and now they've, they've changed their orientation completely in that timeframe.
Thanks.
Or change it back the other way if the market improves for them.
They might realize what a demand they have for single-family and there are a couple of studies that show if the houses are 350,000 plus, that it's a great benefit to the, to development entities like Newland Communities to go ahead and put in single-family, so they may decide to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Jackson?
One question, the first one I guess really is for you, Mark. It may be appropriate to consider putting some of the projected growth compared to the allocation to schools on the website so that parents can see the areas that may be most subject to rezoning. All you have to do is take a look at where the blues show up on capacity.
Right.
And you know, around those schools, we want to increase utilization rates of the physical plant. And so, if you're a parent and if you're in that, close to that area, you might get rezoned.
Right.
I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea, but, but it certainly would address many of the concerns that parents have, have raised whenever we have rezoning questions. A question that, that I always ask, on your capacity numbers, I presume you're using the capacity numbers as furnished to you by the school district. And I would remind the viewing audience that those capacity numbers were actually increased years ago, even though no square footage was added. The district was able to change the capacity per physical plant and Roy, if I remember right, some of those required waivers from the state. And some of the new construction is attempting to address that. Is that, is my memory on that correct?
We were, I'm sorry. With some of the renovations, we've gone in and reconfigured some of the classrooms and getting them up more to TEA standards, but in most cases, when we've done the major renovations, we've actually been able to increase the capacity at certain campuses.
And then a, a question as to percentages of, and this is really what I call market share. When we took a look at this last year, the number that, that I remember is that we had approximately 93% of the market share. Now, what's being shown is that we have 90% of the market share. Is the, is the difference for that, the number of students that are estimated to be out there who just don't happen to be in schools anywhere?
Our methodology has improved this year over last year's methodology and yes, that is correct.
So, is it still appropriate to say that of students who are actually enrolled in school are, are actively being homeschooled, that we still have approximately 93% of that market? So, it's not as if we lost three, three points of market share within one year?
Basically that we just have that option now for looking at homeschooling slash not in school.
Also, in the future, I caution you against making too many, taking too much stake in slight changes in that percentage because of the variation in the American Community Survey estimates of how many students are not enrolled or are homeschooled. It's a very rough estimate based on a very small sample.
And then I have one question for you that Don and Bob always ask, but since they didn't ask it tonight, I'll, I'll ask it instead. Do your demographic projections invalidate any of the construction plans that, that we are carrying out and that were funded as envisioned by the bond proposal?
No.
Thank you.
I would just add that I, I still think the number of 97% of parents who choose to enroll their students in public or private school are still in Cy Fair ISD. And those numbers, I think you described us last week, there's, that, that number could include early graduates that aren't 18 yet, dropouts. It's not necessarily all homeschooling and certainly wouldn't think that number would be that high in homeschooling, so.
And thank you for that clarification because it's an important number that we talk about within the community and it's very important that, that we understand the manner in which the numbers are derived. So, thank you.
Ms. Blackshire?
In your projected utilization for 10 years from now, you show Cy, Cy Park with 94% utilization. Did your projections use that Ellison development as being commercial or being family dwellings?
So, again, it's mixed use and I can't tell you the exact number. I think we used about 600 only, single-family and perhaps 1,200 to 1,400 multifamily units. And that doesn't take up a lot of acreage and all the rest.
Okay.
They have set aside as commercial now and so, we've been doing the same for two years.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? I know you two ladies want to get on the road, we so much appreciate you staying and talking to us about this. We depend greatly on your resources. Oh, we would love you to leave some of those big maps.
Could I just, just add one thing? We certainly appreciate Pat and Stacy and they are, they are the preeminent group in their field in the state of Texas and they work for all the, the best districts now that we're part of their team. But we, we really do appreciate all the detail they give us and they save this district a lot of money by helping us plan, so we really appreciate the great work that you do.
Thank you again. And I think Lisa will take those maps for us, right? That'd be great. Let's move on to the action items. We have two action items that are consensus.
Oh, yeah, we're in a meeting, right?
Five. A, the board will consider approving the tax refunds of 500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. May that stay in consensus, everyone?
Yes.
And then B, the board will consider approving the minutes of the April 10th, 2017 regular meetings. May that stay in consensus, everyone? Great. That brings us to our action items non-consensus and we do have, we're going to take some of those out of order because we do have some other presenters with us tonight and we want to make sure that we respect their time. So, the first one we're going to take is B, the board will consider the adoption of an order authorizing the conversion of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Variable Rate Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds, Series 2014B2 and Variable Rate Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds, Series 214B3 to new rate periods, authorizing the preparation of remarketing memorandum and enacting other provisions related thereto. And I believe Mr. Snow is in charge of this one.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Henry. Recall that in February 2014, we sold a total of $165 million in bonds for the purpose of construction of Cy Park High School, School ADA and Asbestos renovations and land for future school sites. Okay, stay with me because I'm getting, getting ready to confuse you here. Forty million of the bonds were sold as fixed-rate bonds, Series 2014A, while $114 million were sold as variable-rate bonds, Series 2014B. The Series 2014B bonds were sold in three different tranches with one-year, three-year, and five-year term dates of August 15th, 2017, 2000, I mean, 2015, 2017, and 2019. And they were styled 2014B3 in the amount of $39,380,000, 2014B2 in the amount of $37,625,000, and 2014B1 in the amount of $37,675,000 respectively. The Series 2014B3 bonds were remarketed on August 15th, 2015 to a new rate period, term rate period expiring in August 15th of 2017. The initial rate period for the 2014B2 bonds for $37,625,000 also ends on August 15th, 2017. So, we are asking you to consider adopting an order authorizing the conversion of these bonds, the 2014B2 and 14B3 bonds, to a new rate period of three years in duration, ending on August 15th, 2020. The bond order also approves the preparation of a remarketing memorandum and confirms the appointment of JP Morgan Securities as the remarketing agent. We have scheduled the remarketing to set the rate for the new rate period for the week of August 8th with closing on the transaction on August the 15th. Also, our bond counsel, Jonathan Frells with Bracewell, Bracewell is here to answer any legal questions you may have about the bond order and Tim Peterson with JP Morgan is also here as well, both of whom, by the way, supported the, our educational foundation today by sponsoring a golf team at the golf tournament today. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Just a comment, Madam President, I could tell Jonathan played golf today. He got some sun.
Great, do we have any questions? Mr. Jackson? No, no questions? Do we want to be consensus or non-consensus?
Did you win anything?
I came in fourth.
Fourth? Well, that's cause Don and I were not out there.
No, you didn't win. First loser.
Do you guys want to vote on this separately? Separately on Monday? All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a presentation and it is out of order as well. And that is item number H. And the administration will provide the board with information on a pilot initiative in partnership with Lone Star College Cy Fair titled "The College Academy," which will provide 2017-18 freshman students at Cy Lakes High School with an opportunity to graduate with a high school diploma and an associate's of science degree. And I believe Dr. Macias is going to start us out on that.
Good evening, President Manguyad, board members and Dr. Henry. I am both pleased and excited to share with you our pilot opportunity to begin in the 2017 and 18 school year at Cypress Lakes High School, our CFISD College Academy at Cypress Lakes High School. This pilot is in partnership between CFISD and Lone Star College Cy Fair. Students who are eligible for the College Academy may earn both a high school diploma and an, and an associate of science degree when they graduate from high school. We're able to, to consider this opportunity for our kids because the law changed with House Bill 505 in the last legislative session. High school students no longer have restrictions on the number of dual-credit courses they can take or when they may begin taking these courses. Now, some of you may be familiar with the early college high school concept or you may have heard of the early college high school concept. And so, this is, this is very similar to this. Prior to, to the House Bill 505 that I just mentioned, students could not take courses, dual-credit courses earlier than, than their junior year unless they were in an early college high school. So, with our proposal, we are looking at something similar, but without the red tape of an intensive application process or restrictions on which students may earn an associate's degree or having to have a separate building or space in a college to house a program. Just, just, just a few things. So, listed before you are the main components of an early college high school. And so, you can see allowing students who are least likely to attend college opportunity to, to earn a high school diploma and, and college hours, offering a rigorous instruction, accelerated courses, providing support for the students, increasing their college readiness and reducing barriers to college access. I share that with you because with our proposal, with the College Academy, go ahead, one more time? This is what's different with it. It's going to be available to all students. However, attention's going to be paid to our economically advantaged students and our first-generation students. But it's an opportunity for any student in Cy Fair ISD who would like to earn an associate of science degree while in high school to be able to do that. But certainly, we will pay fo, focus to, or attention to our students who, who are economically disadvantaged. Everything, go back one more? Everything that you, you see here that applied to the early college concept will apply to the College Academy. We, we again will offer the dual-credit courses. Our support is going to be with, with a, with a support person that will be an advisor, so an academy advisor mentor that's going to be there on campus specifically to support the kids, specifically to make sure that they stay on track or get them back on track if they, if, if they need that support. Our kids in, 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 in the College Academy will still earn 20, at least 26 hours to be able to have the foundation and the endorsement. And the endorsement for these kids will be the STEM endorsement because again, the degree is an associate's degree in science. For our students who are participating in this program, in the ninth grade year, we will focus on preparing them for the college readiness, ready assessment because they still have to be college-ready to be able to take the dual-credit courses. So, we're going to make sure that in our PACE class that they have right now, that we are building in opportunities to, to study and get them ready to score at the standard they need to for the TSI, the entrance exam, to be able to, to take the dual-credit courses. Then, and, and they'll be able to begin taking a dual-credit course the second semester, so in, in the spring semester. Then, as we continue on, they'll take more dual-credit courses in the 10th grade and then in the 11th and the 12th grade as well. We want to make sure that the kids that enter the program have every opportunity to stay in the program. So, if by the end of the, if by the second semester of their freshman year, they haven't reached that college-ready standard, then that's not going to push them out of the program. We will be able to have a summer opportunity to, to continue to get in them college-ready and then to be able to take that first, that first course that, that we will be offering. They'll have a summer school opportunity, basically what I just mentioned, being able to either use it to either take another dual-credit course or to be able to... to either use it to either take another dual credit course or to be able to catch up with the course that they, that they weren't college-ready for with the TSI, or to get them college-ready. We, we plan on exposing them to taking courses at the college. So we'll have an opportunity for them to actually take a course at the college during the, during the school day. We'll provide the transportation for them. We want to make sure they have, they have that experience with the college environment. And as I said, they'll have that support all along the way with, not just from the Cypress Lakes staff, but also from our College Academy advisor and mentor. This is the information that we use as our criteria to identify kids and invite, and invite kids to consider this, this, this opportunity. Because it's at Cypress Lakes High School, it had to be students, students who will be attending Cypress Lakes High School, so those eighth graders. We, we're looking at kids who have, who are taking Algebra I right now and, and have that credit, passing the EOC, and who have successfully completed or are completing at least a Level One English Language Arts course. Now, there is a reason for, for this. When, when, as Dr. Henry and I have, have talked over the last, I guess, couple of years about this type of, of concept for, for our kids, one of the things that, that Dr. Henry was, was very adamant about was that kids were going to be able to participate in electives, that they would continue to, to, to be able to, to have the benefit of a comprehensive high school and the electives. So that's why we, we, we have this criteria where they're bringing in some high school credit as well. We actually, our committee actually looked, looked at even adding to the criteria, the, the high school credit in, in the foreign languages. And they, they decided to remove that because that would keep, that would keep kids from being able to, to, to participate in this program. So this, it's a very minimum criteria that, that's being provided. So our kids who are in the College Academy will be able to still participate in football or, or theater arts, or, or dance, or, or, or football, or whatever elective they, that they choose. Now, before I talk a little bit about the parent meetings, I, I, I just want to share with you, as you probably already know, our, our strong partnership with Lone Star College Cy Fair. I, I actually approached Dr. Zook, Dr. Zook II at the J Inspire event this year. I believe it was February 14th. And I said to her, okay, I've kind of been investigating this, and I've been talking to Dr. Henry more about it, and let's do this, but let's do it outside of the early college realm so that we can include all kids and not have all the red tape. And she goes, okay, well, we can start looking at it. And I said, no, let's go ahead and do a pilot. And she goes, okay, when? I said, this coming, this coming school year. And so, so that was, that was February 14th. Two months later, we are ready to roll. We're ready to roll with a pilot at, at Cypress Lakes High School. That couldn't happen without, without truly having a great partner with, with Lone Star College Cy Fair. So I'd like to introduce our, our partners that are here today. Actually, Dr. Deena Shepper, the Vice President for Student Learning, was here a little earlier and, and had to leave. Dr. Michelle Zook, who I cornered there at J Inspire, and she's the Dean of Academic Affairs. And Hollander Thompson is the Director for Educational Services and Partnership. I'll also tell you that we couldn't, we couldn't get this up and going without our two middle school principals from the schools that feed into Cypress Lakes because the kids are there right now. And, and so they've had to do a lot of work in a very, very short time. And so Reggie Mitchell, Reggie, from, from Thornton Middle School, and Dr. Jose Martinez from Watkins Middle School. Sarah Hardy has been, has been right there with us as well, and her child has graduated from college, so, so she couldn't be here. But our kids, our kids for the academy are sitting there. They had to identify the kids, they had to find them. And then, two months later, as I said, we're ready to roll. We've already had our parent meetings. Can you, can you go ahead and click again? This is a parent meeting at Thornton Middle School. It was packed. There were, there, there, we had to bring in chairs. And then the next day, we had the one at, at Watkins. And that's, that's actually just half of the room. The other half was just packed. And some of you know that I'm a little competitive, so after the Thornton parent meeting, I sent that picture to Dr. Martinez, I said, hmm, are you going to be able to beat this? And he did, he did. Now, we have more kids at Watkins that go to Thornton than we have, I mean, that go to Cy Lakes than we have at Thornton that go to, to Cy Lakes. But we, we didn't know what to expect. The, the Lone Star team was right there with us. Mary Jaloski is, is leading the initiative for, for our curriculum team. And we thought, you know, if we can get 60, you know, parents there and, and, and just start, that's what I said, let's just start a pilot, even, even if it's like 30 or 40 kids, let's start a pilot. No, we had several hundred parents there. And, and I would say a large percentage of our parents that were there have kids who are first generation kids that are going to be going to, to college. And, and after the, the parent meetings, we had parents coming up to us thanking us. There were some that were crying and thanking us for this opportunity. There were some that wanted to go ahead and give us money for, 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 for the course. And so it, it was, it was just an exciting opportunity and an exciting, very moving moment. I know for me and for the team to see, to see our parents and, and to see the excitement that they had, that they were going to have a child that was going to be earning a degree, an associate's, an associate's degree. So a very excited opportunity. One of the, one of the visual, their slides that Mary Jaloski shared at the, at the meeting with parents was this one. And so it shows for a three-hour course at Texas A&amp;M, that's the cost. Keep clicking. At, at U of H, that's the cost. Lone Star College, not, not the dual credit, that's the cost. At, with our dual credit partnership with, with Lone Star Cy Fair, it's $72. But in addition to that, we provide all of the textbooks. Those of you that have had kids in college or have them right now know that textbooks, yeah, can cost $150, $200, $250 per book. All of that is provided for, for our kids. And then our kids who, who, who need some financial assistance, we're so grateful for, for Cy Hope and the scholarships that they provide for our students. So we thought we might have maybe 60 applications because that night, Mary went through pretty much what I went through, they, they went over the application process. And we thought if we can get 60 or so applications, right now we have 175. So, so we're really excited about the opportunity. Now, I don't know how many will actually complete the whole process, but that's what we have right now, and we're very excited of this opportunity. So beyond the pilot, and they haven't seen this, so they might kind of, yeah, have heart failure, but, but here's what we're looking at, I did say we, guys, here's what we're looking at beyond the pilot. Of course, it opening up in 1718 at, at Cypress Lakes, the next year, adding three or more high schools, and in three years, bringing all of our high schools on board with it. I'll share, I'll share with you that, that, we've shared this with our high school principals, and, and, and Mary has sent our high school principals the four-year plan for the associate of science degree because this isn't something we can just do right now at every campus. You have to build for this. You have to have enough dual credit teachers that have the appropriate certifications and hours to be able to teach the classes. At, at, at Cy Lakes, we started there because you may recall that Cy Lakes opened up with a prepare-to-dream college, college approach. So they are set with all of these classes, and, and they were pretty much ready to go. There were a few, you know, barriers, and I said to, to, to Dr. Zook, we can figure out a way around those, I'm sure. And, and, and they did, and, and they did. And then, and then finally, one more click, being able to add more of the associate degrees that, that, that our kids will be able to, to pursue. So I, I, I know along with our committee are looking forward to May 2021 and attending the Cypress Lakes graduation where we will have students there that will be graduating with a high school diploma and an associate's of science degree from Lone Star College Cy Fair. So you have any questions? We have it answered them.
Wow. That is tremendous. I think that's just a wonderful idea to help our students, and, and I'm just so pleased. I can't hardly wait to be there at that graduation. That'll be fabulous. And yes, I think we had a lot of questions. I'm going to start down at this end. Mr. Jackson?
This is really exciting. To borrow words from Mark, this is something to cheer about. You know, it's kind of funny, I was in Dr. Johnson's office in Austin on Monday of this week. I was grousing about, wouldn't it be great? And he was saying, wouldn't it be great if every junior took the TSI? And now you've unveiled the plan of having freshmen and potentially eighth graders take the TSI so that parents can see how close they are to being college-ready? I mean, very exciting stuff. Only a small number of districts in the state of Texas, as I learned going through Leadership Tasby, have even thought about this. None of the big districts. I mean, this is really a remarkable quantum leap, so to speak. It addresses a concern that I picked up when I went to my alma mater's chancellor council meeting. At that meeting, it was reiterated that our non-Title I students graduate in four years from my alma mater at five times the rate of our Title I kids. The rates of non-graduation of our Title I kids are really just off the charts. The, the overall four-year graduation rate is only 65%, so you can see the tremendous disparity. I think this helps to address a couple of the issues. I mean, this is really so exciting. I'm really kind of beside myself. One, it takes care of the cost, cost function. Two, you address the rigor. You immediately address the concept of success at a higher education level. And you basically guarantee that success in what we know for our Title I students, if they graduate from college, you will have successfully broken the cycle of poverty. I mean, not only is, is this dramatic, but we're talking about changing lives and families forever. So, so thank you, Linda and Mark, for working on this. Clearly, it didn't happen overnight. You've obviously been thinking about it for a couple of years. And of course, Lone Star College, thank you for being such a superb partner. Y'all started this years ago, and, and it's continuing to grow. I presume that the Avid program, which is over at Watkins, will continue to, to help shape and develop students to go into this program?
We, we certainly will look at that, and, and we'll be able to collect data to see how many of our students that are entering the program are Avid students and how many of them are actually completing the program. So Dr. Martinez will be helping us with that.
Thank you. I thought you were going to say you were speechless, Tom, but that didn't work. You were so excited. You were speechless, but that didn't work out.
You know, that's my version of being speechless.
No, I wanted to say too, I'm, this, this is just so exciting, so innovative. Of course, it's Cy Fair and Lone Star Cy Fair doing it because that's what we do. As I just finished teaching at Lone Star Cy Fair in my EDUC 1300 classes, a lot of times I would have the kids that were, you could just tell, they were some of the best and the brightest, but a problem there was transportation. And that, like, if they didn't have a ride to school, if mom had to use the car for work, they couldn't get to my classes all the time. And mine was just the first-year freshman class. So I can see that being a problem too in their biologies and their maths and everything. And here, this is what makes this even more wonderful for me is that they are coming to the school, they have transportation to the school. It is just already kind of a guaranteed success plan for, for them. And, and I appreciate that part of it. I was thinking, the, the parents will figure out that if, like, the parents are smart and the kids are smart, they'll figure out, ooh, let me take two foreign languages in middle school so then I can have more electives in high school. They'll figure that part out. We, we were already having that conversation today in my house. But the other part I wanted to highlight is I like the Level One Language Arts requirement because that is part of being college-ready and doing college work is being able to write at a college level. And, and, you know, sometimes that was the hiccup for some of my students, that maybe they just weren't there yet. So looking at the language arts part to me is, is very beneficial also. I did, I did kind of want to, you know, a little devil's advocate, just teenagers get excited about something and then they change their mind a year or two later. What is, I know you talked about they'll still get their 26 for the foundation plan. So I was just thinking about that, maybe the plan if they want to transition back to and not be in this program.
Absolutely, that, that's always an option. We hope they don't, they don't choose that option. And, and that's why we're going to have our College Academy advisor and mentor that's going to be there. So, so that's, that person, it'll, it'll be a maybe three days a week type, 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 type position. But the role of that person is to, is to be continuously monitoring and working with the students and helping the students stay on track. And then when they get off track, to help, help them get on track, make sure they come in the summer if, if they weren't TSI during that, that freshman year.
I just, I think it's great. I think so many students that, even the freshmen that I had start at Lone Star, they don't realize I'm going to have a graduation ceremony with my associate's degree. I mean, and the families, then I have a family friend who her son is about to finish at Lone Star, and she said, what, there's a graduation? I mean, it's just, like Tom said, it's just life-changing for a lot of people. So thank you guys for, for doing this.
At, at, at one of the parent meetings, I think Dr. Zook shared, don't forget to mention that they'll, they will also be able to attend a graduation at Lone Star College. And those parents just erupted clapping.
Love it, love it, thank you.
Dr. Ogletree?
Just ecstatic over this. And it speaks to the creativeness that exists in our district and, and the blessing that Lone Star is to our community. Many times, the greatest disparity is the disparity in opportunity. And this is opening up a door for, for students, giving them the opportunity. And I can't thank you enough, looking forward to it. I was, as you were going through those slides, Linda, the word I kept hearing was pilot. And I was saying, when can the other schools, when can the opportunity spread? And I look forward to that and be wishing everyone well.
Three years is pretty quick. I think that's going to be great. Mr. Covey?
I'm thrilled. Number one, I go back to the preparing the dream. And Dr. Anthony took me to the first meeting when they were talking about opening the pilot program. And I believe that there were four and or five districts that were part of that original part. And if I remember correctly, when we had the first parent meeting for that, and we chose Cy Lakes specifically for the amount of students that were economically disadvantaged in first generation, and they expected 250 parents to show up at the first meeting, and there are over 1,000. And I just find that, I get chill bumps just saying that because I was thrilled that they had that opportunity. And much like what Dr. Ogletree said, we talked about, we might put that on to other schools if, in fact, it was successful. And here we are, we've done that, and there is college readiness at every one of our high schools. So I'm thrilled to see that you've got something to, to lay it out for, and I will, just accolades to you. And I, I tell you the one that really took me, Linda, you're so creative. And I know Dr. Henry had nothing to do with that part. But so creative to take early college high school and make it applicable so we don't have to go through the red tape that they do, and yet we're offering the exact same thing, and kids are walking away with anywhere up to 60 credit hours is just phenomenal. And I applaud you, I applaud Lone Star, God bless you, Lone Star, for being part of this. You know, you never turn Linda's down, you know, you might as well get used to the yes. So, but I will also say, Linda, National School Board, got to do a session, just telling you.
Mr. Ryan?
First, thank you, Lone Star. No, I mean from just my family, the classes, the money we've saved over there, I appreciate it. But this is, this is, Lone Star is the greatest gift that our community has had in a number of years. Are, so I want to make sure I understand, so the kids going through the program graduate with 26 hours? with 26 hours, is that what it is?
Those are the credits, those are, that's the endorsement.
How many, how many college hours would they come out with?
Hours.
Sixty.
Sixty college hours.
Looking at roughly, yes. Any fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
That's unbelievable.
Unbelievable. I wish that we would've had the wisdom to do this four years ago when my kid was a freshman, I'll tell you that right now. Part of me is a little tick, but that's okay. And then, I have to say, we've got two great middle school principals sitting right there. That, uh, that, that, those two are a blessing on those two campuses, I can tell you that. How many, what percentage of those eighth-grade parents roughly attended those meetings? And of those that weren't able to attend, what are we doing to get the word to those that were not in attendance in those meetings?
Well, Mr. Ryan, remember that we had criteria. So, the parents that were invited were those of students who met the criteria. So, it wasn't all eighth-grade parents that were invited. It was only those of, of, of students who met the criteria.
And that was, was that 100% that were in attendance?
No, probably. It was a huge number. We, as I said, we were, we were just, just elated at the, at the percent that was there. Now, our challenge, and, and I know that, that our two middle school principals are gonna help us with this, is, is making sure that we follow through with, with everything for them and that we get them from that application process to actually the, the academy.
And then, how, how does it work for a, I'm sure it will work, I'm just curious, of a student that would, let's say, transfer into Cyphlakes, move into that zone in 10th grade? Open to that student?
Remember, this is a pilot. So, so we, we, we have to work out, that's why. It's, this, this is a pilot, so we're gonna work out the, the kinks to it. But, but without visiting with our team yet, I, I, if, if the student had the, enough of the courses and the credits to, to be able to fit in there, we certainly would take that into consideration. But if they don't have a, if they don't, if they're not able to start taking the, the dual-credit courses by the time they're probably spring semester sophomores, then it's hard for them to be able to get all the courses in, to be able to graduate with the associate's of science degree.
I was just thinking, those that came in that second year, if we were able to reel them in, that would be awesome. Just depending on, I don't know what the current mobility rate is in Cypress Lakes and in that area, but it's high at some of the other campuses around there.
Remember, the second year, we'll have another cohort going through at Cypress Lakes. The third year, we'll have another cohort going through at, at Cypress Lakes. So, there'll be opportunities to, to see if we can, if we can get them on the path to be able to, to accomplish the task by the time they graduate.
That's all I've got, thank you, I'm pumped.
I also am very excited about the possibilities for our students. Ironically, I was talking to a parent just this week in Tomball ISD, and I can't remember, I think they called theirs College Academy too. But the drawback for that parent was that their students are not allowed to do extracurricular activities. And I commend y'all for putting, leaving that in there, because that's an import, important part for our students in, in being a rounded individual. And I can see how if someone couldn't play football or basketball, that it may deter them from wanting to take this path. So, you're to be committed for removing those barriers. And, you know, I too think Lone Star College, I think back to how many years ago when we did the petition drive to bring them to our community? And my credit union was involved in that effort. And I will tell you, Lone Star College Sci Fair was definitely, definitely an example of building it, and they came. And finally, I just think what's so great about this district, and this, what you have done ties into our theme this year, Cypress Fairbanks ISD, Opportunity for All. And that is what we're doing. We're giving our students an additional opportunity to be successful. And it just is, I think it was Tom who said it, you know, it's life-changing. It will be life-changing for these students who are able to graduate from high school and already have their associate's degree. Because I think a lot of times we kind of lose students. They get that college degree and they may get a job and think they can't do any better or definitely can't afford to do better. And we've removed that barrier. And thank you so much for, for this unique and great program for our students.
A quick announcement, that we do have some other fabulous middle school principals here too, that I know when their schools feed into these programs at the other schools, they'll do a great job too. Thank you.
Good point, good point. That is a wonderful addition. And it was quite a while ago that we did the petition drive for Lone Star College. And I think they have far exceeded our expectations and our hopes for having a community partner and providing the education for all of our students, but also our seniors and our little kids with Discovery College. It's just been a wonderful partnership with Lone Star College, and we appreciate it so much.
Just a quick comment, again, we, we're so appreciative of Lone Star College. And I, I think the beauty of Lone Star College Sci Fair and Sci Fair ISD is even though we're both large, it's, it's the ability to do things quickly. And, and that's because of a board that we have here that allow us to take chances and try things for the benefit of students. So, we don't have to jump through a lot of hoops. We bring you a good idea and, and you go for it. And, and Debbie, Debbie tested on it and Linda tested on it, but it really, really is important that our young people, even while they're getting an associate's degree, have a high school experience. And the extracurricular activities and the clubs and all of that are an important part. And that's really what makes us different from everybody else that's doing this. And again, that goes back to Lone Star College's willingness to do that and Linda's and her team's creativeness in making it happen. So, we're excited.
Shall we keep that as a separate item? Yeah, I think so too. All right, so we have one more that we're gonna move out of the order. And that is Item F. The board will consider approving the locally-developed Cypress Fairbanks ISD Teacher Evaluation and Support System as the district's evaluation system, beginning with the 2017-18 school year. And Dr. Roy Garcia is on for that.
Well, I wish it was Dr., thank you though, it's Mr. Garcia. Thank you, Madam President. We do have a presentation for you to assist you, as you, as you shared. We want you to consider approving the locally-developed CFTESTs Teacher Appraisal and Support System. And we will begin with Christina Cole of our Directors in Human Resources. And she will be joined by Glenda Horner, our Director of Staff Development, and Jill Smith, our other Director in Human Resources.
Good evening, President Mungoya, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. The district has been using our current locally-developed version of the Professional Development and Appraisal System, known as PDOTS, known as Sci Fair ISD here for the past 15 years. As you know, in the span of time, education has evolved. And because of this, during the 16-17 school year, the district set out to update the tools of the evaluation to reflect current practice in teaching and in learning. This evening, the district, at the request of Dr. Henry, comes before you to submit a proposed appraisal process and criteria with the recommendation to accept and adopt the locally-developed system for teacher appraisal as outlined in the Texas Education Code 21.352, as well as Chapter 150 of the Commissioner's Rules Concerning Education Appraisal, specifically Subchapter AA Teacher Appraisal. The aim of the proposed new appraisal system seeks to maintain a focus on providing continuous, timely, informative feedback to educators so they can improve their practice. And so, with this in mind, please allow us to provide you with the backdrop, the rationale, and the approach of the district as it relates to the proposed new appraisal system, the Cypress Fairbanks Teacher Evaluation and Support System, or CFTESTs.
In order to better understand the district's move to a new appraisal system, it is incumbent upon us to share the backdrop behind this decision. In June of 2014, Chapter 149 of the Commissioner's Rules Concerning Educator Standards was updated. This slide shows and provides the categories for each of the new standards. Chapter 149.1001 clearly states that the purpose of the teacher standards is to inform training, appraisal, and professional development for teachers. The new Texas teacher standards outlined in Chapter 149, along with research-based best practices, provide the foundation for the new CFTESTs appraisal instrument. In a few minutes, you'll see how each standard is carefully woven into the CFTESTs rubric. Just like our Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills are for students, these standards define what teachers are supposed to know and be able to do. In Chapter 150 of the Commissioner's Rules Concerning Educator Appraisal was rewritten with new pieces that pave the way for a new appraisal process based on continual feedback and reflection. These key pieces set the backdrop for the district's decision to move toward a new appraisal system. With this in mind, let's take a moment to consider the district's rationale for moving to a new appraisal process. As we mentioned earlier, much has changed about teaching and learning in the years since adopting the district's current local appraisal system. Today's teacher is a guide on the side instead of a sage on the stage. Today's teacher has moved from an instruction paradigm in which an instructor transfers knowledge to students to a learning paradigm in which a teacher's role is that of coach. The result is a student learning how to learn and discovering knowledge with the guiding, the coaching guidance of a teacher. This truth fuels the district's rationale for moving to a new locally-adopted appraisal system. Take a moment to consider our mission, our why as the district, and what connects, and what connections can be made to the need for a new appraisal system and process. When we reflect on how much teaching and learning has changed in the 15 years since we first started our present appraisal system, it is clear that it is time to consider a new appraisal process to serve our greater why, that of preparing students to be 21st-century global leaders.
With the backdrop, as well as the rationale at the forefront of their thinking, the district, under the guidance of the superintendent and his cabinet, desires to move to a locally-adopted appraisal process. Chapter 150 of the Commissioner's Rules provide districts with two choices in selecting a method to appraise teachers, a teacher appraisal system recommended by the Commissioner of Education, or a local-developed teacher appraisal system. Section 151.007 provides the parameters for a locally-adopted teacher appraisal system. Texas Education Code 21.352 states that "A school district that does not choose to use the Commissioner's recommenda, recommended," excuse me, "recommended appraisal system must develop its own teacher appraisal system supported by locally-adopted policies and procedures." It also states that "The school district-level planning and decision-making committee shall develop an appraisal process, develop evaluation criteria, including discipline management and performance of teacher-students, and consult the campus planning and decision-making committee on each campus in the school district." Additionally, the appraisal process shall include at least one appraisal each, each year or less frequently in accordance with Texas Education Code 21.352, a conference between the teacher and the appraiser that is diagnostic and prescriptive with regard to remediation needed in overall performance by category, and criteria based on observable job-related behavior, including the teacher's implementation of discipline management procedures as defined in 151.001, beginning with the 2017-18 school year, the performance of teacher-students as defined in 150.001 of this title. In turn, the school district-level planning and decision-making committee shall submit the appraisal process and criteria to the superintendent, who shall submit the appraisal process and criteria to the school district Board of Trustees with the recommendation to accept or reject. The school district Board of Trustees may accept or reject an appraisal process performance criteria with comments, but may not modify the process or the criteria. The district approach is grounded in a vision that is fourfold. First, that our focus is on student learning and student response to teacher practice, reminding us to keep our eye on the main thing. Secondly, growth is measured over time. It's not about a one-shot dog-and-pony show for an appraiser. Instead, it's about continuous improvement and growth over time. Third, a high standard of proficiency. Our aim is to provide each classroom with a highly-skilled teacher. And lastly, a system that is evidence-based. The appraiser has a vital role in assessing teaching proficiency and ensuring that teachers and administrators derive reliable and meaningful information from the teacher evaluation process. By providing evidence-based feedback, appraisers help teachers and administrators make decisions that support and improve quality and student performance. The aim of CFTESTs is to capture the holistic nature of learning, the idea that a constant feedback loop exists between teachers and students. Engaging the effectiveness of teachers requires a consistent focus on how students respond to their teacher's instructional practices. During the 16-17 school year, the district conducted a small pilot of CFTESTs, and the pilot included Adam Elementary School, Kayla Middle School, and Langham Creek High School.
During the pilot year, the district garnered and utilized feedback throughout the process through an advisory council. Pictured here are many, but not all, of our council members. The charge of the council was to support the district by serving to provide input and feedback throughout the process of developing a newly-locally-adopted appraisal system that is responsive to the parameters set out by Texas Administrative Code Chapter 150 and Texas Education Code Section 21.352, while maintaining the district's commitment to a continuous improvement process that is provided in two models, Plan One and Plan Two. As you can see, the makeup of the council included principals from each of the three pilot campuses, assistant principals, one from each of the pilot campuses, director of instruction from the middle and high school pilot campuses, and teachers from each pilot campus, including each grade level, content area, and teacher organizations. The work of the council was to inform the development of the structure and to provide feedback concerning the process throughout the 2016-17 school year as the appraisal process unfolded on each of the pilot campuses. More specifically, the council provided essential feedback in two critical areas, the appraisal instrument, including the domains and performance levels, and the appraisal process, including appraisal plans and cycles.
First, the group provided feedback that helped shape an appraisal instrument consisting of four domains and 16 dimensions, planning, instruction, learning environment, and professional practices and responsibilities. Each dimension within the domains is fleshed out into specific descriptors of practice that are measured along a continuum of five performance levels. In addition to informing the domains, dimensions, and descriptors, the group also helped inform the five performance levels, distinguished, accomplished, skilled, developing, and below expectations. Secondly, the council also helped shape the appraisal process, including appraisal plans and cycles. Knowing that a critical component of the continuous improvement process is the ongoing support provided by the appraisal process and the collabora, collaboration between the teacher and appraisal, the group provided critical feedback all along the way as they experienced each phase of the process, including orientation, goal-setting, observations, review of goal-setting, and the end-of-the-year conference. The feedback from the pilot campuses indicated the CFTESTs appraisal system and process requires a greater time commitment from both teachers and appraisers. Many districts throughout the state have responded by moving away from the traditional approach, requiring every teacher be appraised every year, and have moved toward appraisal cycles. With this in mind, beginning the 2017- With this in mind, beginning the 2017-18 school year, the new locally-developed process provides four appraiser plans for teachers in CFISD. The new teacher induction plan for teachers new to the profession or to the district: this plan includes orientation, goal-setting, and the end-of-year conference. Teachers will receive appraisal feedback on 1 45-minute formal observation and 2 10-15-minute informal observations and be scored on all four domains of the CFTESTs rubric. This plan allows the district to target learning opportunities that are specific to new teachers. Plan 1 for teachers in the second and third year in CFISD: this plan is for those who are in their fourth year and beyond, who have not achieved a minimum of skilled in all domains and/or not met the district's expectation of off-contract hours for professional development. As you can see, this plan includes orientation, goal-setting, and the end-of-year conference. Teachers on Plan 1 will receive appraisal feedback on 1 45-minute formal observation and 2 10-15-minute informal observations to be scored in all four domains of the CFTESTs rubric. Teachers in their fourth year or beyond in CFISD who have achieved a minimum of skilled in all domains and met the district's expectation for off-contract hours of professional development are eligible, at the discretion and approval of the principal, to move to Plan 2. Teachers on Plan 2 are either on-cycle or off-cycle. Plan 2 on-cycle includes orientation, goal-setting, and the end-of-the-year conference. Teachers will receive appraisal feedback on a minimum of 3 10-15 informal observations and be scored in all four domains of the CFTESTs rubric. Plan 2 off-cycle includes orientation, goal-setting, and the end-of-the-year conference. Teachers will be scored only on Domain 4 of the CFTESTs rubric. For teachers on Plan 2 off-cycle, short walkthroughs may occur throughout the year.
Listening to the voice of the pilot campuses has helped to shape an appraisal instrument and process that allows us to capture the holistic nature of teaching and learning. All along the way, the district identified what we wanted to learn from our pilot campuses, devised a way to collect feedback, collected the feedback, analyzed the feedback noting patterns and trends, and drew conclusions to determine actionable steps we could take to shape an appraisal process that best serves our teachers. As the pilot year draws to a close and we look toward adopting CFTESTs district-wide, we took the opportunity to share with our pilot campuses that their voices were heard. Here is what we shared with them in a recent meeting. As we move toward a close, let's consider what our pilot campuses offered as they reflected on their experience. Adam Elementary Assistant Principal Jessica Wood offered that. The CFTESTs appraisal system is focused around growth mindset and rooted in reflection, feedback, and refining your craft as a teacher. Alicia Caskey, teacher at Adam, offered this recommendation: "My suggestion would be to take a step back and ask yourself what, where you want to be as a teacher in one, two, maybe even five years? Then choose an area you want to see growth, start small, and build upon your goal." Principal Virgil Maddox at Kayla Middle School shared this insight: "Are students engaged in taking responsibility for their learning? With CFTESTs, yes. Teachers are challenged to engage students and go to greater depths in planning. CFTESTs is reflective for teachers and appraisers." Vanessa Duran, teacher at Kayla Middle School, offered this insight: "The CFTESTs process is one that is helpful to teachers and that it is simple to follow, and you receive feedback at various times. I believe that it creates a positive relationship between the appraiser and the appraisee. It pushes teachers to reach higher goals, and it also allows for change and growth. The process helped me to internalize how I deliver instruction and what my students need to achieve. I believe that CFTESTs will help us become better educators." Langham Creek High School Principal Dave Hughes shared that. "It is a growth-minded, evidence-based system that evaluates student responses to teacher practice." And finally, CJ Brock, teacher at Langham Creek, provided this observation: "CFTESTs places its success in your ability to communicate your content to your students, communicate your path to your appraiser, and communicate your flaws to yourself in order to be the best facilitator, mentor, and teacher to your students." With these words in mind, we consider our next steps in this journey. First, on behalf of the superintendent, we ask that you accept and adopt CFTESTs as the district's locally-developed system for teacher appraisal. Secondly, upon your approval, the district will move forward with plans for training and first steps in the implementation, including training over 400 campus appraisers in the appraisal process, providing resources and tools for each campus so that they may facilitate CFTESTs orientation for their teachers, and providing resources and tools for assisting teachers with the first step in the process: goal-setting. And finally, beginning with the 17-18 school year, student growth will become a required component in teacher appraisal for any district to which Texas Education Code Section 21.351 and 21.352 apply. However, with Dr. Henry's approval signature, the district submitted a waiver to TEA that provides the district with the opportunity to pilot student growth during the 17-18 school year. Once again, our current pilot campuses, Adam, Kayla, and Langham Creek, have agreed to serve as pilot campuses. We learned valuable lessons from them through this year, and we know that they will be able to provide valuable feedback and insight into how to best measure student growth in Cyfair. In fact, at this time, we'd like to ask our pilot campus staff and members of our advisory council, who are here this evening, to please stand and be recognized. Thank you for the investment that you've made in the future of Cyfair. It truly has been a pleasure. In closing, President Mungoya, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry, as you consider this information that we've shared with you this evening, are there any questions regarding this request to accept and adopt CFTESTs as the district's locally-adopted system for teacher appraisal?
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Starting at this end, any questions?
A couple of observations. First, I want to commend you, Mark, but also your team, as well as those of y'all who helped put this together. This is, in fact, consistent with the corporate culture. The focus is on positive, not punitive. It is very responsive with comments that I made during board comments from four years ago expressing concerns over the direction the state of Texas was moving. I was not the only one, and in fact, I think you probably predated my concerns with a written So it's nice that we were all on the same page. I think this approach does exactly that. This district is renowned for its longitudinal growth, and I think our teachers can take succor in that we are going to continue down this path of longitudinal growth, but the focus is on the positive and not the punitive, which is so often what comes out of Boston. So I really have no questions, just comments for a job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Since this is, I think it's outstanding. However, I do want to ask that since the bottom line per the state is going to be student growth, how is the state determining that? How is that weighed per one school which has a particular set of circumstances and students as opposed to another school?
So, the state is giving districts the opportunities to select various ways to determine if students are being successful. One of the ways that we're looking at is student learning objectives, which gives the teachers the opportunities to set goals for their students, and then the teachers, through collaboration with their appraisers, determine if they're being successful based on the data. So the teachers kind of determine how they're going to assess the students as far as their success, and then they collect the data and then they share those with the appraiser. So really, the teacher has a lot of discretion in determining how students are progressing and their students and what adjustments they're making. So that's something that we'll be learning a lot about here in the near future.
Thank you, Dr. Olutry. Mr. Covey?
Just a question. Are first-year teachers assigned a mentor, a more experienced teacher, to help them through that first year?
Yes, that's actually through the Office of Staff Development. We do assign all of our first-year teachers, whether they're new to the profession or new to the district, in both cases they're assigned a mentor.
Mr. Covey?
It looks really good. Am I on? It looks really good. But I had a couple of questions. Number one, how are you going to evaluate whether or not this is working? Have you got an evaluation tool? Is that something you're processing, or you've already got it?
Yeah, we... The district purchased, two years ago, they purchased an online system, a module that allows us to do that. So we've been doing our current appraisal system under that umbrella, and we'll just transition into that. So it allows us to collect data over time, it allows us to pull reports, it allows us to look as a district at what appraisals look like, and it also allows a campus principal to see that. In the past, it's been kind of sort of a blind dive into it because they weren't really able to see what appraisal looked like across their campus, much less across the district.
And a little follow-up question. You said 400 appraisers you're going to be training?
Mm-hmm.
Where are these people coming from? Out of the classroom?
No, they are currently seated assistant principals, directors of instruction, principals. So our high schools, on average, have nine appraisers, our middle schools have around five, and our elementaries have around three.
So, I mean, basically, we've already had that in place, too?
So, yeah. So they were trained to be appraisers in our current appraisal process, so they'll need to be trained in our soon-to-be-adopted appraisal process. They'll need to be certified in that as well.
You know, just the whole idea that we mentor our first-year, second-year, and third-year teachers is awesome, and it's something that I share with anybody that I talk to, because I think, and I think we do the same thing with our principals, which is awesome. So just, I think the whole idea of mentoring and bringing people up instead of just throwing them out and letting them wade through is a much better idea. So this looks really good. Thank y'all for the presentation.
Much for an excellent presentation. Dr. Henry?
Just one comment to go along with what Dr. Olutry said. That's something, having student growth being considered in a teacher's evaluation will be something that we continue to monitor very closely, and if we feel like it gets out of hand, we will protest. But I think whether he agrees with it or not, I think the commissioner's coming around to Cyfair's way of thinking a little bit. Now, he might not really think it, but I think because of pressure, he's coming along. You know, my argument has always been if we're performing, we really don't need his input, so... As long as we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and achieving what we should be achieving, he ought to just leave us alone. And leave our teachers alone.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Any other comments? Great job. So we got through our three action item non-consensus presentations, and they're all going to stay as non-consensus items, I think would be the best way to do it. Let's just go through some of these others and see if we can perhaps move some of them to consensus. All right, starting back at the top. A, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. One, fertilizer and pesticides. Two, landscape maintenance services. Three, portable classroom building construction. Four, transportation department vehicle wrecker. Any questions on any of those items?
Just one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Covey?
Matt, is this toward you on the portable buildings? Who does the portable buildings? I'm sorry. I get, you know, Roy, I know we've still got quite a few, but this basically is just retrofitting what we've got, it's not getting new ones? Is that what this is?
This is actually a new contract for us to purchase and construct new buildings as needed. So every three years, we usually have to go out and rebid the package for new construction. But it also includes unit prices for various other services for relocation, not so much the relocation of buildings, but for decks and ramps and things like that as well. Thanks.
Could that possibly be on consensus, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
Good. B, we've already put to non-consensus and had the presentation. C, the board will consider approving the budget amendments for the period of January 1, 2017, through March 31, 2017. Are there any questions on that item? Any questions? Would everyone consider putting that on consensus?
Yes.
Great, we'll move that to consensus. D, the board will consider approving our first-reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. One, DEE local compensation benefits expense reimbursement, that is a revision. Two, EHBC local special programs, compensatory accelerated services, that's a revision. Three, FEA local attendance, compulsory attendance, that's a revision. Four, FJ local student fundraising, a revision. GE local relations with parent organizations, that's a revision. And six, GKD local community... And six, GKD local community relations, non-school use of school facilities, a revision. And I would tell, remind everyone that we did get a copy, a hard copy of some of those changes on six. Any questions on those items? How does everyone feel about consensus on those? Do I see agreement on that?
Yes.
Great. That will be consensus. E, the board will consider participating in the board's self-assessment pilot developed by the Washington State School Directors Association, and I believe Mr. Coby will talk very briefly about that.
Well, I think everybody got a copy of this. Teresa sent it out to us. Basically, President Mungoya and I attended this at the National School Board in Denver, and the presentation was, it was very interesting, and it was also something that I know we as a board have talked about individually and as a board, that we need to start doing, and it is suggested that this is something that you need to do on an annual basis. I know I always feel very comfortable with our board, and our board functions very well, but there's always room for improvement. So I think it's awesome that we consider doing this, and I will say that the gentleman that wants or has, the gentleman that asked, because this was done in Washington, and I believe Idaho, the two states that have done this, the one in Washington, I believe, happened about seven or eight years ago, and now the amount of districts in Washington that are doing this self-evaluation has tripled or quadrupled in size, so it's catching on up there. But they wanted to come into Texas and try it out here, and so we're kind of being offered an opportunity to try something new and to be a resource for it. The neat thing is, it is a new evaluation tool, and they're willing to furnish us with lots of statistics and lots of information. And I will say that he did give me a timeline the other day. If you take a look at this, you do this on the computer, and you can come into the district and do it, or you can do it at your home computer, and he said it takes about 20 minutes to complete these 72 questions, and that is all, I mean, it's, it's not anything anybody else looks at it, goes into a database, and that's retrieved, and then they come up with summaries and presentations and ideas. So he's planning to have this online for us by June the 15th. He said that he will have basically a report back in late June or early July, and I told him that we do not meet in July, so August will be the first time that we'll have a chance. And Dr. Gore wants to come down and do the presentation with us and talk to us and work with us. So that's kind of the way it's set up. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer my minimal amount of intelligence here. So anyway, anybody?
Any questions?
I just, I just have a comment. Bob, I'm glad you brought this to us, and I'm really thrilled that we, we have a board that wants to improve and grow as a team and also individually. I think that's awesome. I think the benefactors of everything we do are the students and the employees of our district. So I think anything we can do to improve, we should definitely take a look at. So thank you for bringing that to the table.
Other comments? Mr. Jackson?
You know, if we expect our teachers to be evaluated, and if we, as a board, evaluate the superintendent, it is only appropriate that we're evaluated as well. A self-evaluation is just a first step. In our life, I signed 10 Ks and 10 Qs, and I had to be familiar with listing requirements. As Stuart knows, there is a listing requirement in the United States that a board for a public company has to engage in a self-evaluation based upon achieving the stated mission. It is considered to be that much of a best practice. Clearly, when I served on TASB, TASB pushed the concept of best practice. What differentiates this evaluation versus that as proposed by TASB and what you see in Team of Eight training is that the focus is on the mission of the district, which is student attainment. Team of Eight training, as well as other TASB-based board evaluations, are somewhat less refined and less focused than what this is. Clearly, this satisfies best practice, and although we've talked about it on this board since I was a rookie six years ago, I am pleased that we are moving in this direction. And at some point in time, I fully expected to be able to expand upon this, so we have feedback from the public, as well as teachers, at times other than election, on when they, when they do an evaluation of the board itself. So I'm, I'm happy to take this step, and I see it as a first step in the process.
Any other comments? Can that be on consensus?
Separate.
Separate? Okay. Lisa, that'll be on separate? All right. We've already talked about F, that will be on separate, that will be non-consensus. G, the board will consider approving on dual reading addition, revisions, or deletions to district policies. One, DNA local performance appraisal evaluand, evaluation of teachers revision. That, of course, was the presentation we just saw, I assume. Do we want to keep that on? Any questions? Any further questions on that? Do we want to keep that on non-consensus?
That's just consensus.
All right. Great.
That's just the policies related to that.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure. All right. H will be on the non-consensus. I, the board will consider approving the advanced courses for 2017-18. Any questions on that item? Will we like that on consensus? Great. J, the board will consider approving an update on the district's hazardous traffic conditions resolution as required by TEA to receive supplemental transportation funding. Any questions on that item?
Just kind of one.
All right, Mr. Coby?
Just, and Mark, this is to you, and it's, if I read that correctly, now TEA believes that if it's hazardous, that you can bus within the two-mile area. Does that affect any of the funding from the state for us?
I think Dr. Henry's going to let Mr. Morgan talk about that.
Mr. Morgan?
We get, we can claim the ineligible miles, we can claim 10% of those for reimbursement. So we get about $500,000 a year for the ineligible miles. Does that answer your question?
They considered eligible miles, looking at what the TEA said? Maybe I misunderstood it.
We can do a hazardous declaration, which will allow us to claim 10% of ineligible miles, but the miles don't become eligible because we claim them as a hazard.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We just do this in order to claim the 10%.
Okay. All right.
Okay, with that on consensus. All right. J, the board will consider approving an, I'm sorry, K, just got, just got my finger in the wrong place. Sorry about that. The board will consider approving the right-of-way dedication to Harris County for a turn lane located at the intersection of Tuckerton Road and Heffmeister Road, and for a signal light at the intersection of Tuckerton Road and Point Park Drive adjacent to Cyfals High School. Any questions on that? May that go on consensus? Great. Consensus. Item number L will be considered as a non-consensus item on Monday. The board will consider and take action on the independent hearing examiner's recommendation in TEA docket 061-LH-02-2017 regarding the proposed discharge of Kevin Whitfield. And we may have a closed session on that. All right, that makes it our way through our non-consensus items, and we do have a board discussion tonight. The board will consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, and I believe we're going to go to closed session for this. All right. So, I, can I have a motion for, for closed session?
Madam President, I move that we go into closed session.
Second.
Second. The board will now adjourn to closed session under the Texas Government Code Open Meetings Act for the purposes stated in the posting of this meeting. If the board determines that any final action, final vote, or decision on any matter considered in the closed session is required, such final vote, action, or decision shall be taken upon the reconvening of this meeting in open session or at a subsequent meeting of the board in open session after proper notice has been posted. And I believe that we will have that vote on Monday, if, if there is necessary for have one. So there'll be no more action tonight, so.
Can I?
Oh, yes.
Before we adjourn into that closed session, just, just one quick announcement, and I know there's no one in here to, not many people to give her a round of applause, but tonight is, today is Stephanie Meagles' last day in CF ISD.
Oh.
So, want to acknowledge Stephanie and all the great contributions she's made to Cyfair ISD, and she still lives in the community, and she's still a parent, and she's still a community member, and she's going to continue working closely with the district. But she got a promotion, is going to Harris County Department of Ed, and we're really proud of her.
Yay.
Go public.
Yay.
Hey, also, if anybody needs help carrying these binders, Teresa got us, just let me know. Got it. Got your covers.
Stephanie, we're going to miss you.
And, and Mark, before Stephanie leaves, would you remind my cousin that she owes me a book synopsis and a book?
We appreciate that. I do want to remind everybody that we do have our Monday, our Monday meeting at the Berry Center. So be looking, yeah, we'll be looking forward to seeing you there, and there are many, many students that will be recognized. It's going to be a real fun meeting, and we'll be very happy to see all those wonderful student accomplishments. Thank you.